2017 Meeting of the Zoning Board of Appeals for the City of Troy to order. Before we go into our roll call, I'm just going to introduce everyone up here to the public that's in attendance, either in person or at home. And we do have a point that we're going to actually be rotating members, and so I'm going to explain that here in a second as I introduce everyone, which is unusual, but we're going to do it here tonight. So, to my left, your right, is Mr. Lambert, and he's a member of this board. And then to his right is Vice Chairman Eisenbacher. And then this is Ms. Koopa, who is a full member of this board, but she also is a planning commissioner, so she's our liaison to the planning commission. I'm Glenn Clark, I'm chairman of the board here. And then to my right is Mr. Desmond. And then to his right is a brand-new member appointed to this board by action of the Troy City Council. This is Jim McCauley, so welcome to you for your first meeting. And then at the end of the board table is Mr. Agalas. And so that's the board for tonight, but not exclusively, so I'll get to the rest in a second. Then, over here on the side is Mr. Evans, and he serves as the city administration's liaison to this board. And at the end of the table is Ms. Dufresne, who is an assistant city attorney for the City of Troy, and she will serve as our legal advisor to this body tonight. We also have in the audience over here at the end, Mr. Calzounas, who is an alternate appointed by city council to this board. And he's not at the board table right now, because we do have our full contingent of board members. But since he was on this board before we were a full seven-member board, we were without one member, he did sit in consideration for item number 5A. And so since he already heard testimony and information presented by the city administration and the public, we're going to rotate him back to the board when we get to that item 5A. And Mr. McCauley is going to be kindly asked to take a seat in the audience. And so at that point in time, Mr. McCauley will not have any voting privileges on this board. When we conclude business on 5A, or take any action on 5A, move on to another item, we're going to rotate again, and then Mr. McCauley will fully sit for the rest of the meeting, but of course, before that, until we get to that item. So hopefully that makes sense to everyone, and like I said, that's a little unusual, but here we are, and we're going to proceed appropriately. So at this point in time, I'm going to ask Mr. Evans to call the roll for the board.
Mr. Clark.
Here.
Mr. Agalas.
Here.
Mr. Desmond.
Here.
Mr. Eisenbacher.
Here.
Mr. McCauley.
Here.
Mr. Lambert.
Here.
Ms. Koopa.
Here.
So we have quorum, we have actually a full board here present tonight. I'm going to call on Vice Chairman Eisenbacher to explain to the public that's here our rules and procedures of this board.
The zoning board of appeals is a group of seven of your neighbors appointed by Troy City Council to decide on requests for variances and other matters that are brought before them. A variance is a relaxation of the literal provisions of the zoning ordinance. Petitioners must indicate a hardship or practical difficulty with the land that would warrant the granting of the variance. Procedure: The board will hear the items in the order that they appear on the agenda. When an item is called, the chairman will verify that the petitioner is present. Then the city administration will summarize the facts of the case. Petitioner will be given an opportunity to address the board to explain the justification for the action requested. After the petitioner makes their presentation and answers any questions that the board may have, the chairman will open the public hearing. Any person wishing to speak on the request should raise their hand, and when recognized by the chair, come up to the podium. The speaker should identify themselves with name and address, indicate their relationship to the property in question, for example, next-door neighbor, lived behind the property, et cetera, and state whether they are in favor of or against the variance request, and give reasons for their opinion. Comments must be directed through the chairman. Comments should only be kept, should be kept as brief as possible and closely pertain to the matter under consideration. Only one person will be recognized by the chairman to speak at one time. At the conclusion of public comments, the chairman will close the public hearing. Once the public hearing is closed, no other public comment will be taken unless in response to a specific question by a member of the board. The board will then make a motion to approve, deny, or postpone the request. In order for the request to pass, a minimum of four votes are needed. If the request is not granted, the applicant has the right to appeal the board's decision to Oakland County Circuit Court.
Thank you, Vice Chairman Eisenbacher. We'll move on to the item number three, which is approval of the minutes, related to the September 19th meeting of this board. Does anyone like to be recognized? Mr. Lambert.
Mr. Chairman, I move approval of the minutes.
I will second it.
Move by Lambert Koopa to approve the minutes as presented. Any discussion? Seeing none, Mr. Evans, we're prepared for a vote.
Mr. Agalas.
Yes.
Mr. Desmond.
Yes.
Mr. Eisenbacher.
Yes.
Mr. McCauley.
Yes.
Mr. Lambert.
Yes.
Ms. Koopa.
Yes.
Mr. Clark.
Yes. Motion carries. We move on to item number four, which is the agenda which has been presented to the board and the public. Are there any points of interest or discussion or disagreement with, related to the agenda before we consider it the agenda for tonight's meeting? Seeing none, we will move forward with the agenda set as presented. So now we'll move on to item 5A, and I'm going to ask Mr. Calzounas to come to the board table and ask Mr. McCauley to take a seat somewhere else in the chamber. Thank you, gentlemen. Mr. Evans, would you please present to us on this matter?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to direct everyone's attention to the monitors in the front of the room. This is a variance request for property at 383 Hickory. The subject property is outlined in red on this overhead. It's in an area south of I-75 and east of Laverne Road. There's a close-up of the property, it's just near the corner on the north side of Hickory. And the subject matter involves an existing home that was recently constructed. Now, the applicant applied, and throughout the construction process, there was an oversight that resulted in the house being placed too close to the property lines. Now, the city code says that the house must be no less than five feet from any one-side property line, but when you add the combination of both setbacks, the left and right side, you can't be less than 15 feet. As the house is proposed, there's close to a four-foot setback on the, that's the west side, and so the resulting combined setback is 13.15 feet. So essentially, he needs a variance to keep that house in its existing location. This matter was first heard by the board in July, it was postponed to August, but we didn't have a meeting in August. We heard it again in September, and then it was postponed to today's meeting. So I'll turn it back over to the board for any questions anybody might have.
Thank you, Mr. Evans. Are there any questions or comments to the city administration by a member of the board? Seeing none, we will call the petitioner back forward to the podium, and if you can identify yourself once again and let us know your relationship to the property in question, please do so.
My name is Caesar, I was the person who built the house.
Hi, I'm Reka, I'm the owner of the house.
Welcome.
Hello. I have a piece of paper here saying that the neighbor next door, which I'd like to present to somebody, who's, that's saying that they gave permission for the house to be built where it's at.
Okay. Could you present that to Mr. Lambert, and every member will look at it, and then it'll be deposited with the city staff? Thank you. So you're saying that 369 is signed off?
Yes.
Okay.
The house wasn't built on purpose. I didn't do it on purpose to do it. It was done by contractors who made a mistake. It wasn't planned, didn't know about it. I didn't know until we did the as-built, and which was towards the end of the building of the house under construction. If it was noted, it did the as-built in the beginning, the mistake could have been fixed, where we wouldn't be here talking about it.
Okay. Anything else? Is there any, are any questions for the petitioner or the petitioner's representative? Mr. Lambert.
I don't know how the board is going to vote on this, but if for some reason the board were to deny the variance, have you made contingency plans for what you would do to the house in order to rectify the situation?
If, you're seeing if everybody says no?
Correct.
No, I didn't make any plans. I don't have any options.
Okay. Thank you. Why don't you go ahead and have a seat, unless there's anything else from a member of the board for these petitioners? Okay, thank you very much. And while the letter continues to circulate, eventually being deposited with Mr. Evans, Mr. Evans, we did have a public hearing on this matter before, so, or Ms. Dufresne, I don't know who wants to address this, so would you recommend that we reopen the public hearing?
At your will, as the chair, you're not required to hold another public hearing, but as the chair, you may, if you choose.
Why don't I just inquire of the people who are here before us in the chamber? Are there people that would like to address the board that haven't already done so in a previous meeting? Let me ask it that way. Can you raise your hand on this matter, this particular matter? Okay, seeing that there isn't, aren't any hands, I think that answers the question. So we won't reopen a public hearing tonight, Mr. Evans?
If I could, it should be noted that in the, we did receive several written public comments, and those were contained in the application package that the board received since our last meeting.
Sure, let me call on Vice Chairman Eisenbacher now for that portion. Can you just overview for us, any written or electronic communications to the board?
Yes, they're in our packet, there are eight pages, that are eight. Eight of the homes that are within the 500 feet, I believe within the 500 feet circle of the home, that are in favor. And then the ninth would be the one that was just passed on the table. So nine communications. I don't have the notes from our last meeting and all the people that spoke, what the layout was of for and against.
So are there, does the board want an inquiry of staff on this matter at this time? Is there a member who would like to be recognized for a motion? Vice Chairman Eisenbacher.
Well, you still have an open motion on the table from us. My understanding is you still have a motion, you need to take action on the motion to deny.
Okay.
Okay. I, I mean, obviously, we've had a lot of time to think about this one, we've got the additional feedback from the adjacent neighbor, that's the most affected person at 369. And I, in review of the motion that's on the table in front of us, or the proposed resolution, which would have allowed for the variance, the thing that struck me is that I don't want to grant a variance that would allow a deck to be closer to the neighbor, or something to be built on the side of the house to be closer to the neighbor. It wasn't, as has been presented to us, it wasn't the builder's fault that the forms were not put in the right place, and the basement placed in the right place, and the garage built in the right place. Obviously, it's not the person who bought the house, their fault that it was built in the improper location. But I don't want the variance to grant any future additions onto the house or into the backyard because of a dimensional thing that we set this evening. And in, speaking to Mr. Evans before the meeting, his thought that I, in terms of putting that thought into words, is that it be for the house as it sits today, not basically for the property in general, in terms of a setback. So what I would propose is to modify the resolution, to replace the resolution with the resolution to approve the variance, for the residents to be, as written in the agenda packet, four feet from the side property line, where the zoning ordinance requires a minimum five, five-foot setback, and two, to allow a total of both sides' yard setbacks to be 13.15 feet, where the zoning ordinance requires a minimum of 15 feet for the house as it sits today.
So to be clear, because I'm not your parliamentary coach, but Robert's rules indicated that you'd have to amend the main motion. So what you're saying is, whatever phraseology you use, you're saying that you want to amend that motion, is that correct?
Amend, replace.
Okay, yes.
That needs a second, I second.
Yeah, so that's moved and seconded to amend the main motion, which was for denial of the applicant's request, and then now the Eisenbacher-Desmond motion would change it with an amendment to approve it under the conditions or the, with the background information that Mr. Eisenbacher shared, so.
Mr. Chairman, I definitely need to take action on the motion first, and if Mr. Lambert, it was his motion, if he wants to withdraw that motion?
I would have to disagree with you strongly. It was a properly moved and seconded motion, it becomes the main motion, but then the motion to table has, had authority over it, so put it, you know, away to tonight's meeting. Then, when it comes back to the table, it is the main motion, unless there's an amendment that's made to it, which becomes the main motion, this is the main motion. So we have to dispose of the amendment first. If the Eisenbacher-Desmond amendment passes, then it changes the actual motion for essentially a second vote for approving if you like what the motion says, or denying if you don't. But it is, it is proper to take in an amendment first, and you, as you have a main motion and you put an amendment, now someone hypothetically could put another amendment on, which you would dispose of first before you move on the original amendment, and you work your way down. And that's clearly what Robert's rules says.
Yeah, I think the proper word for Robert's rules is a substitute resolution.
Okay.
So we'd vote on the substitute first, then on the substituted resolution.
Sure, I'll accept your language, I'll call an amendment, you'll call a substitute motion. So, at this point in time, there's discussion on the amendment, which is the Eisenbacher-Desmond effort for approval, and if there's any discussion further by a member of the board, we'll hear it now. Not seeing any, Mr. Lambert, yes?
Just one clarification, either from the sponsor or from city staff, that if the substitute would be approved, then it would not only approve the variance for the side, the minimum five-foot setback, but also the total of 15 feet of total side?
Yes, so for, for both those items that need to be amended, but only for the house as it sits today. So it's not for a future deck, it's not for a future whatever skinny shed on the side of the house, or skinny abutment on the side of the house, just for the, when we saw the plans last meeting, it's the triangle of the property would be approved, is the intention.
And just so you're aware, had you not clarified that, staff would have taken it that way for exactly what was applied for, as indicated not only in the printed agenda, but the documentation, so I think you're covered twice there.
Questioner.
Yes.
Do we have a similar history in the past, a similar situation?
To city staff.
I can't remember one that we've ever had like this, where it's been come to the board after a house has been built to say, I need a variance because I'm too close.
Vice Chairman Eisenbacher.
We have had items come before us where a person goes to put an addition on the house, and they find out that the house was improperly placed, though. That was years and years later, it was only found out because they checked the print and checked the variant, the site, but not as-built. But again, that was what was discussed at the last meeting, where the foundation wasn't checked at the time it was placed, it was later that the print for as-built was submitted.
Usually, the city inspector don't have to inspect that unauthorized before they put the rest of the building?
The city inspector does inspect it, but the requirement to submit as-bills is an administrative rule, not part of the code. And the city put that in there simply to avoid situations like this. It's not part of the construction code, but it's a requirement. It's simply to protect everyone involved from a project getting to where it's at now, when it's more different, and a lot of money's been invested.
I know, I built a deck in my house, and the city inspector came and authorized it before I finished it, you know, so I wonder, you know, somebody did do his job here.
Do you want us to ask the developer or the builder to let them to submit the as-bills? That didn't happen.
Right, the city doesn't do the as-bills.
So you can't go and inspect until the as-bills are?
After the foundation's done, and the city don't go there, right?
They need to be advised, they need to be advised, let the as-built.
We've have had, I, I'm aware of one situation where a builder did call me, and told me he'd submitted his as-bills, actually, before he submitted his as-bills, realized he was eight feet off where he should have been. And we talked about a potential variance, it was at the foundation stage, so that's the reason why it's there. And there's no question that the builder is responsible for doing everything the right way, and I think everybody involved tries to do everything the right way.
I think Ms. Dufresne makes a good point, and that is, the property owner at all here are culpable for what has happened, and it's at the discretion of the board to wipe that away, or, you know, or not. And, and just to clarify, I think, because I think we may be moving closer towards a vote, so there's a couple ways of addressing this here tonight. We do have a main motion in front of us, which is the Eisenbacher motion. So the board could choose to approve that, and will then go to the final motion, which would be essentially an approval of what Eisenbacher and Desmond have stated, and so that'd be a yes if you approve, or a no if you reject, and then if, if it's, if that's like a yes, yes, then we're done with this. If the, this amendment is rejected by the board, we go right back to what Ms. Dufresne said, which is what would be the main motion then, which was the original motion from last meeting, which was a vote, a motion for rejection. So if, when we're voting here, if you vote yes, we'll then move to a secondary vote, which will be for approval. If you, the majority vote no, we'll go right back to the original motion and start working on that one. So I think that's as clear as it can be at this moment in time. So, any other discussion?
One more.
Mr. Agalas.
One little nuance, should we put some language about a fire-resistant wall in the revised motion?
That would be, I would say, the city staff.
It's actually already in the code. It's in the construction code.
I don't think it's a bad idea, though, I was thinking that you would do it, I mean, get to the main motion, I don't know if it's necessary in the amendment.
Okay.
Because I did want to point that out, and I'm glad you pointed it out, Mr. Agalas, I mangled that up, I'll next.
It's pretty close.
I was wondering if the applicant was aware of Mr. Grusnik's email from August regarding the firewall?
Yes. The city attorney has asked if the petitioner is aware of the firewall email from Mr. Grusnik from the city?
I don't, I think somebody did tell me that.
You, well, let's, okay, you can't, you can't give us an answer from back there. So why don't you come back to the podium, yes? Because we have to place this on the public record, because the public has a right to hear.
I don't remember the inspector who told me, if you do say yes, I do have to build stuff to code. And one of the things was a fire-rated wall, and which, that was my plan if you would have said yes. And I'm willing and will be doing that.
So that wall currently is not fire-rated?
The garage is actually fire-rated. The bedroom upstairs is not fire-rated.
I see, okay.
And I sat in on that meeting too, but we wanted to make sure the applicant had an understanding, he still retains the understanding of the department.
Sure, absolutely, okay. So, any other debate or discussion, questions, inquiries? Mr. Evans, I believe we're prepared for a vote.
Mr. Eisenbacher.
Yes.
Mr. Calzounas.
Yes.
Mr. Lambert.
No.
Ms. Koopa.
Yes.
Mr. Clark.
No.
Mr. Agalas.
Yes.
Mr. Desmond.
Yes.
Motion passes. So we're now back to the now-changed main motion, which is for approval, and it's, any member at this point in time can cause any amendment to be offered. Mr. Eisenbacher.
One thing I just want to clarify for the record is our five points that we have to consider for any item that comes before us. This is a very exceptional item, because the exceptional characteristic of the land was improper reading of a survey, and improper placement of forms on the land. It's, and so, item A is a bit more of a stretch than what we normally see in front of us on the board, but in terms of the preponderance of these items, item B applies fully because it is for this location. Item C, characteristics that make compliance with the dimensional requirements are not of a personal nature, it's not a personal nature, it's related to the structure on the property. The charact, D, the characteristics that make compliance with the dimensional requirements difficult, but it's not have been created by the current or the previous owner, wasn't created by the current owner, wasn't created by the previous owner, it was created by the construction person who did not follow the plans. E, the proposed variance will not be harmful or alter the essential character of the area in which the property is located, will not impair the adequate supply of air and light to adjacent property, or unreasonably increase the congestion in public streets, or increase the danger of fire, or endanger the public safety, or unreasonably diminish or impair established property value within the surrounding area, or in any other respect impair the public health, safety, comfort, morals, or welfare of the inhabitants of the city. The big thing we didn't have at the last meeting was the consent from the next-door neighbor, that it wasn't a problem, we received that this evening, along with eight other, eight other of the neighbors. This is a one-foot variance, and if you look at the situation of the house on the property, the actual physical location of the house is not closer than what would be seen elsewhere in the neighborhood.
Okay, so, interesting perspective, is there, to Ms. Dufresne's point earlier, is there any interest by a member of the board to amend this motion, or, yeah, to amend the motion at this point in time, to add in the fire rating of the wall, I guess namely the upstairs, is that correct?
Well, it's a state requirement, according to our packet.
Well, according to the petitioner's representative, it's the second-floor bedroom is not, and it's going to be still at four feet away from the neighbor's property.
Well, from the property line, not from the house.
Well, I understand, but the property.
We can, I would offer an amendment, although it's hard to, maybe, I don't know if Ms. Dufresne would have a recommendation, but I would, potentially amendment along the lines of the property must be brought up to all applicable fire safety codes.
I can tell you, I think Mr. Grusnik's email refers as one-hour exterior fire-resistant rated wall for any portion of the wall less than five-foot setback, any portion of any part of any wall that's less than five feet setback.
Yeah, so for that triangle of the structure, everything that's within that triangle of the structure that is within the one-foot overlap.
Whether the board includes that in their Whether the board includes that in their motion or not, it needs to be done, because we're not granting a construction variance. So it's going to have to be done. So if the variance is granted, it's going to have to be done. And I know the building official in the building department has advised the applicant. It was one of the things we did in between meetings to make sure they understood, and we actually, the portion of the living area that's within, that was required to be physically barricaded off from use, because we knew it didn't have it until the outcome of the board's action at that point, if there was a granting. And there are ways to make it fire-resistant. We've been helping the applicant on that, to try to minimize the amount of intrusion necessary, but at the same time, meet the fire code. So it's covered, even if you don't put it in there.
Okay, I withdraw any, any further amendment.
Uh, any other member of the board would like to be recognized? Mr. Lambert?
Just one comment, I guess. I'm, my concerns were somewhat allayed by the fact that the next-door neighbor had no problem with the setback. And I certainly believe that mistakes were made, and no, there's no intent here to violate the city's ordinance or, or codes. The issue for me is more of the fact that the Part Two, which is to allow the total of both side yard setbacks to be 13.1 feet, where the zoning ordinance requires a minimum of 15 feet. That's what's my major reservation for voting in favor of the resolution. So as it stands right now, I'm going to have to vote no just upon that part of the resolution.
Yeah, thank you. Any other member? Seeing that there isn't any other discussion, Mr. Evans, we're prepared for a vote.
Mr. Keltzounis?
Yes.
Mr. Lambert?
No.
Ms. Koopa?
Yes.
Mr. Clark?
No.
Mr. Agalas?
Yes.
Mr. Desmond?
Yes.
Ms. Eisenbacher?
Yes.
Motion passes. Congratulations, you have your variance. Have a very good night. Item number five B, we move on to the property related to 755 Marengo. Mr. Evans, can you please present on this item?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This is for property located at 755 Marengo. This is a residential piece of property in a neighborhood north of Square Lake Road and west of Rochester Road. On the overhead, it's outlined in red. It's on the north side of Marengo there, right in the middle. And the subject matter involves a shed that was started to be built without first getting a building permit. Now, this is the survey of the property with Marengo at the bottom, the houses to the right. I've circled the shed, which is outlined in red there. Now, the city code requires the shed be set back six feet away from the side property line, and as it sits right now, it's five feet away. So in order to continue construction and leave that shed there, the applicant needs a one-foot setback variance from the board. The applicant has provided photos of the structure as it sits right now. He did stop construction until this matter was resolved. These are all in your packet. Now, one thing I just want to point out, that the applicant mentions in his, is that the property along that west property line, which is requesting a setback, is actually what's commonly called a paper road. And this is a plot of the subdivision from the twenties, and I'm going to enlarge the lower right-hand part of it. That paper road is actually a part of the subdivision just to the west of this property, and it's actually a 25-foot right-of-way. At that time, it had a name different, Orchard, I guess it's the same name now. So Orchard actually sits here in this unimproved area. We have received word from our Department of Public Works and our traffic engineer that they don't anticipate a road being constructed here, and they have no issue if the board were to grant this variance. So I'll turn it back over to the board for any questions.
Thank you. So at this point in time, we're going to ask, allow members of the board to ask the city administration any questions on this item. Mr. Lambert?
This question, I probably should have posed to you before the meeting tonight, but just a speculation, and maybe the assistant city attorney can answer the question. If the city were to abandon that right-of-way for a road there, what's the normal procedure? Is it split down the middle between the property owners on both sides, or is it put up for sale on it?
Actually, there's a vacation process, and essentially, it's not put up for sale, it is split down the middle, and I don't know what compensation terms are, but yes, it's split, it's split down the middle from the property owners along those.
Okay.
It's a vaca-- it's called vacation.
Yeah, all right, thank you.
Anyone else?
I have a question also. You said it's in the process of being vacated?
No, no.
Oh, okay.
There is a process.
Okay, just clarifying.
Thank you. Anyone else?
What?
Yes.
What initiates that process to vacate? What would trigger it to?
Um, the city could do it, the counties, I think, could do it, and, um, I don't know if the property owner could.
We've had, we've had property owners do it too, yeah.
So the property owner could request?
I'm sorry?
The property owner could request?
Yes.
Because then we wouldn't be having to grant the variance, if they had asked for that.
But if it's not, it's the whole, you can't just do part of it, it would be the whole length of Orchard, so you'd have to get all the property owners along that, along that.
Okay.
So it wouldn't be done piece-to-piece.
At this time, I will call the petitioner forward. Please identify yourself in relation to the property in question.
Evening.
Hello?
My name is Arsime, I'm the, Arsime Hiddich, I'm the property owner.
Good evening. Would you like to explain to us why you've filed your...
Okay, I, I moved in that house in 2014. This was my father-in-law's house. He purchased that house in 2002. So when he passed away in 2014, the, his wife transferred the property to our name, and we continued to pay the mortgage in order for her to be able to stay in that house, because she wouldn't be able to afford to pay for the mortgage. So when we moved in, I have seven kids, and the, the existing sheds that are there right now are in a pretty bad shape. I asked my neighbor, one, one of the sheds were built, and he told me they were built in, in the mid-seventies. So for me, it was not safe for the kids to play around and that shed to be there, and I did not dismantle that shed yet, because I was hoping to build this shed. And this is my first time I've been building a shed, so I really was not sure what the codes were, if there was, what the variance was, so I, I just set it to be at five feet.
Okay. Any questions of the petitioner? Mr. Desmond? Mr. Lambert?
When you were building the shed, were you aware of any of the setbacks the city would require for it?
No, I wasn't, but I knew that there was a unimproved road, so I thought it would not cause any harm. As you can see in the pictures, the property is at least 50 feet away from the next neighbor, the closest neighbor.
Thank you.
To the shed.
Mr. Eisenbacher?
Are there any physical blocks, is there like a tree or anything that would keep you from scooting the shed over?
There's a power line that I've been trying to remove. It goes right across the middle of my yard. And I've been trying to actually contact DT and even, to try to remove it and try to put it on the property line, but they refused, and they said that there is, that is in the easement, and they have the right to do it. So if I moved it any further, it would be closer to the power lines and the pole.
Okay. Any other member? Mr. McColl?
When you say power line running through your property, does it go east?
Right, right through the middle, going east-west.
Is it elevated?
Yes.
So then, you're talking about if you were to move it farther back, it would be underneath that power line more?
It would be closer to the, the pole.
Okay.
And I'm sorry, I didn't recognize your name. You came the other day, and I wasn't sure. I watched the video a few times that Mr. Paul Evans sent me to see how it's like, because it was my first time, and I didn't see your name on there, so I'm sorry.
Oh, no, no problems. I apologize if I caused any...
Oh, no, not at all.
I have a question for you.
Mm-hmm.
What's preventing you from moving it one foot into the middle of your property, more than that, closer to the power line?
I just, I just thought that, you know, if I could, if I knew there was a six-foot code, I would definitely do it. I mean, it does not prevent, but now when I built it, it's kind of hard. I would have, I'm not sure, even sure how would I move it unless I just start from the top and start disassembling.
Does it have a foundation?
Uh, it has the, it is raised 12 inches off the ground with the two-by-sixes, and it's on blocks, it's on cinder blocks.
Any other member?
And also, I'm sorry, the neighbor at 733, a couple years ago, they had to reconstruct the whole backyard because of flooding. In 2015, I believe, they hired a contractor that had to install, I think they're called French trenches, across their yards and along the yards, so they could get the water out of the back of the property. So if I went further up in this way, the, I was afraid that maybe there would be flooding issue. And that is another reason that I raised it 12 inches, so it doesn't prevent this in the future.
Okay. Ms. Eisenbacher?
So if you get a variance for this shed, you would definitely be tearing down the other sheds?
Yes, it is in bad shape.
Is it just one, or is it two?
There's two of them. The current, the, the, one that was in bad shape, when the garage was built in 2014, we had to move it in the back, so, and that also kind of made the structure a little bit, not, not as, as firm, so that, those, both structures would go.
Both will go?
Yes.
So this would be your only...
This is my only shed, yes. And I have seven kids, and, and every child wants something, so we have seven bikes, we have seven of everything.
Anyone else? Okay, if you can, oh, Mr. Desmond, yes?
I guess it's for the city staff, is, is the foundation for this prop, the shed now, does that meet with current acceptable standards for the, for an outbuilding? I mean, is that...
I don't know if he's applied for a permit yet, so I'm not sure if we know, simply because the cart's before the horse in this instance, and
Okay.
He needs a variance in order to, to get what he's asking for.
Yeah, I was going to apply for the permit, but then when we found it was six feet away, the, the code was six feet, they asked me to apply for the variance first, and then apply for the permit.
Okay. Were you aware that you needed a permit before you started construction at all?
No.
Okay. Does that, does that nothing, is that something for us? That's not anything for us to worry about right now, anyway? This is...
Construction methods?
Yeah.
If a variance is granted, and there's no conditions relative to that, then he would be required and allowed to put this shed, we would work with whatever foundation would work to accomplish what the board wanted.
He'll still deal with the building department, then, to be compliant that way?
Right, exactly.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, you can have a seat, sir.
Thank you.
Vice Chairman Eisenbacher, can you share any communications on this? We'll do that before the public hearing.
I didn't see any. Wait. Nope. Page, page, oh, no, I'm sorry, page 50 was the city staff. That threw me off. I had no communications from the neighbors.
Thank you very much. We'll open the public hearing on this matter. If you'd like to address the board, please proceed to the podium, and I recognize yourself, or identify yourself, I should say. Seeing that there isn't anyone interested, we'll close the public hearing and bring it back to the board for consideration. Any further questions, comments, discussion, or possible action by a member of the board? Vice Chairman Eisenbacher?
In terms of issues with the land, for giving a reason for granting the variance, seems like there's only two, would be flooding, and the power line location, the power line easement through the middle of his property. Still hard to see why you can't just scoot it over by a foot on the, scoot the foundation over, but the mitigating factor is, is that he's got a strip of land that's unused and has no plans for use ever. That's my only comment so far.
Okay, that's not a motion, that's a discussion.
Not a motion yet.
I know that we, this board, years ago, I can't remember how many, seven years ago, it seems like, on my street, Millfordon Road, I live on Millfordon Drive, there was a gentleman kind of in the same situation, but not specifically exactly, that built, started a shed for the same purposes. The old one was falling apart, disrepair, and had sharp edges, and he had, I believe, three children. And he erected a really beautiful shed, but it was like, a little bit too large, and I think a little too close to the property line, but it was already up before the city staff caught it. And so we did grant a variance for that. It wasn't, the neighbor approved next door, there was no objections from any other neighbors, and so it was approved. In this situation, there is not, really, in a sense, there is not an immediate next-door neighbor because of the abandoned road, I mean, even though there's a neighbor past that. And there isn't any objection from that neighbor. So I'm open to someone making a motion on this. I think that this is, you know, hardly a major issue. It's not like a house being too close to another house because of fire or something that you're going to have an issue with. And it sounds like to me that he might have to disassemble the entire structure to move it by one foot, or it could cause perhaps the structure to be unsafe after it's moved. So I would be in favor of granting a variance on this request. But I'll ask someone else to make the motion. Mr. Lambert?
Mr. Chairman, I'm going to move to approve the variance, looking at the exceptional characteristics of the property, the road that is next door to the property, which for the foreseeable future will probably never be used. They are related directly to the premise, premises for number B, or item B. Item C, they're not of a personal nature. Item D, they were not created by the current or previous owner, and probably several previous owners. And item E, the proposed variance will not be harmful, harmful or alter the essential character of the area in which the property is located. Second?
By Lambert, seconded by Desmond. Any discussion on the motion? Mr. Evans, I believe we're prepared for a vote.
Mr. Lambert?
Yes.
Ms. Koopa?
Yes.
Mr. Clark?
Yes.
Mr. Agalas?
Yes.
Mr. Desmond?
Yes.
Mr. Eisenbacher?
Yes.
Mr. McColl?
Yes.
Motion is approved. You have your variance. Congratulations, have a good night. Yes. Item number six, communications. Are there any communications to the board, Mr. Evans?
No.
Uh, item number seven, miscellaneous business, is there any, before we go to board review of procedures, or is there any miscellaneous business from a member of the board, or from the city for us?
No.
Besides that one item? Ms. Koopa?
I have a question. How do we prevent people building things and then coming to us with variance?
How do we prevent them from doing it?
Yeah.
We establish a set of laws.
Well, we now just opened the door for more, frankly.
Right.
I mean, denying that one would have been a way to prevent it.
That's basically what Mr. Motzni and Ms. Bloom had told us very early on in my tenure here, they came and did, and we seem to grant a lot of variances, so I'm just...
Well, what I can, what I can tell you I do is I have pre-application meetings with everyone I can to go over all the standards and give examples of what I believe the board might ask in regards to granting or not granting, to get people to either understand what they need to present to increase their chances of success, or if it's really not a very good case, they understand in their own mind that maybe this isn't the best way to resolve that.
But is it, I don't think some people who come up to us even realize that they need to apply or need to come to you. Before they even come to us, they don't even come to you. So how do we, how do we educate the public and our community that we are here, that you are here first, and that the planning department is here? I mean, I think that's, that's my...
I think a lot of it is about the whiteness, when people don't do the research that they need to do before they start. I mean, there's a lot, everything's up the ordinance, everything is out on the internet. They know recall is here.
And getting construction permits for these kind of projects is not unique to Troy, the state, the country, or the continent, to be honest. It's-
Right, but we have a lot of immigrants who may not know this, and I think that's one of our challenges, is that-
Sure.
In other countries, laws may not be as stringent or enforced, or enforceable because there's not the infrastructure. I mean, we, we know that even our city staff has slimmed down considerably, so your ability to enforce is because we have really hardworking staff.
Half of enforcement is actually willful compliance. And I guess if we start seeing a trend that communication needs to be increased in some way, shape, or form, I've worked with zoning boards, and this zoning board, before I came, heard a lot more cases than we hear now. A lot more cases. And I've had comparable agenda sizes for communities much smaller than this. So I would actually opine that, from what I see compared to other communities, the city's doing a pretty good job and the number of variance cases that we even hear are pretty slim. And in my opinion, I think most of them are justified in getting variances.
And I think too, we, this board sees the difficult cases generally. I think, like Mr. Evans, does try to weed out the ones that are obviously going to be no or obvious, we can work something out without having to go to the board. So we see, kind of like when a case goes to jury trial, it's the difficult case that goes to jury trial. These are the difficult cases that, that come here.
But if there's anything that we as a community can do to educate the public a little bit more?
It's a difficult question, because, I mean, kind of, kind of like with any law. I mean, ignorance of the law is no excuse. I mean, I understand where you're coming from, I, I do, but I'm just not sure what else the city can do. I know the global Troy, maybe that's a place-
Yeah, that might be a-
To educate, you know.
To my fellow zoning board, are you all aware that we now have a board called the Global Troy Advisory Committee? So maybe it's something that we can communicate with them, that we, you know, like a campaign, maybe to educate more people about the laws that exist.
I will say that this is a ubiquitous issue. It's not Troy and it's not even, it just, it's not an immigrant issue. I move a lot of people, I mean, I, as an industry, and the number of people who are very surprised to learn certain things that they want to do to their house, that they need to talk to the city about it, I mean, the vast majority, you'd be very surprised. You see a little bit less of it as price points go up because they become what we call the move-up house, but in a lot of starter home communities, it is, I mean, 80% of people are stunned to, to think that they'd have to go apply to, to put a fence up in their own yard or put a shed in. They wouldn't, it's not even something that is really on their radar at all. So I think in general, it's not something that the consumer knows or really thinks about. And it's not something that until, you know, some, an inspector comes on their property and says, "What are you doing?", that they would have, that they even think in general that, "Oh, I would have never thought to do that." If it's something large, like a garage or something, that's one thing, but as far as a shed, basically anything you can go and buy at Home Depot, they would not think they have to ask anybody that they could put it up because they'd just pick one up from Home Depot and set it up. So, I mean, it's, it's not specific to our community, but it's, it is something I see a lot, so it's worth noting. I don't know how you can raise awareness of that. I mean, it's so-
Realtors' associations is one thing I'm thinking of.
That was my question. When, when the city assessor gets a house that's been sold, is there any educational element to that, that now that you've purchased this home in Troy, as we know that it's been sold, be aware of these bylaws, something they have to read and sign?
Excellent. The city welcome packet, I know we have-
They got a good packet, yeah.
We've got a good packet, and maybe we need to add some information there.
Even, even a disclaimer?
Just even a little blurb.
Great idea.
Yeah, actually, I like the welcome packet because most people-
Do they have, they do, what's the final water read procedure here? Do you know? The only, well, it doesn't matter. The only reason that I ask is that that is, when we sell property, that is our last city communication, basically. If at that moment, there was some, basically mechanism to say, "Hey, all right, listing agent, here's the packet that you could bring to closing", that would be something that, because not everybody goes and gets those packages, even though they're really useful.
Right.
If that was something that, you know, I mean, me personally, that would be something I'd deliver. I would, I would bring to closings. It might be a way to kind of get it right at the gate.
I can talk to my water department and see if there's a mechanism that might help us get the word out-
Yeah.
Or the-
Like when it gets delivered, if it gets delivered as a PDF that also gets passed along or something, I don't know.
Maybe we can do something with the assessor's office too, to get something out to the people delivered to their home. Maybe it's not the entire packet, but just something to say, "Hey, come on in and pick this up. A lot of good information." I mean, there's related to this, trash pickup, you name it, it's all, Cindy does a good job putting those together.
Yeah, I mean, the package is great. It's one of the best I've seen. Yeah.
These are great ideas. I'm actually writing them all down.
I don't know, you usually don't write them down.
He holds up his pad and it's blank.
I'm going to strike that from the-
But I mean, I'm, I'm saying if the city assessor, even if they know that they received this information when they, when they bought the house, then it's in it, it's not just a pack, but it's acquired piece of information.
We know, people come in for the property transfer affidavits, they stop by our counter all the time with directions, and I can talk to Nino's staff about that as well. So, yeah, there's a number of, I think a number of ideas I've heard now, and I'm likely to get a few more when I float around City Hall. So there's definitely something I think we can do.
Thank you.
We'll move on to rules of procedure. Mr. Evans?
I didn't have anything prepared. I know in our informal discussion about this, I think the question that comes to mind that I thought I heard some of the board members mention was, what if the chair and the vice chair were both out at the same time, couldn't make it to the same meeting? I think that's what kind of spurred the informal discussion and consensus that, well, should we look at this and review it? And then essentially, that's where we were at. So I don't have a prepared report. I think the rules have been working pretty well, but maybe this is an opportunity to get those in front of everybody, because I know the date on it is from 2011 and I'm not sure anyone's actually looked at it in any detail, except maybe the city attorney's office in response, maybe some training that we've done over the years. So I guess I'll turn it back over to the board if there's any questions, or maybe we all want to look at this for a month and see if we have questions and we can put it on next month's agenda, or if the city attorney's office has any.
No, Mr. Motzni and I spoke about this, this morning. He did make me aware of the issue that Mr. Evans just talked about, what happens when the chair and the vice chair are both absent. And that is probably one thing that probably should be addressed in here. Any member of the board can make a motion to amend the rules. They don't need to be posted, they don't need, you know, they don't need to be reviewed by the public. I mean, these are your internal rules. So, you know, an idea, a thought I had on that was, if you, if your chairperson and your vice chairperson are both missing, maybe you, it goes to the most senior person, maybe it goes to, you suspend the rules and you have a vote of the people present to see who wants to act as chair. I mean, those are just two things I came up with. You guys can, you know, someone else has a better idea. Right, Article Two, Section Three talks about suspending, suspending the rules. So there is a mechanism in place. You wouldn't have to amend the rules. There is a mechanism in place, but it wouldn't be a bad idea to, to have something in place for the chair and the vice chair, what, what the succession is. And I didn't know if there were any other-
The question that comes to mind immediately for that is, who becomes presiding officer to entertain that motion? That's the, and, you know, but that's a good conversation dialogue to have, you know, in other boards, even city councils, you know, where like the city, like the city clerk is directly elected by the people, the clerk is like the secretary of the board, so that becomes the presiding officer if the mayor and mayor pro tempore are not there. And even some communities have the treasurer is directly elected, so that is an officer position that becomes fourth in line. We don't have that, and the city staff serve as, you know, repository of information, namely the secretarial role. So the board could create a secretary as being the next-in-line person, and it'd be largely ceremonial unless they become the presiding officer of that particular meeting. Or, you know, like the, like your point, I think is well taken, you know, the next senior board member becomes the presiding officer, maybe even temporarily, just to entertain a motion to perhaps suspend the rules and what have you. Of course, I don't think we ever have here at a given moment in time, a roster of who was appointed for how long, you know, in a binder where we could just quickly-
If that information is easily accessible on-
Okay, gotcha. So I, I don't know, I would be fine with that, and it would be pretty non, pretty effortless. Mr. Lambert?
I know one, one of the other concerns I had too was that, except now that we have a full board, but I did have concerns a few times during the course of the past year when we had to count on one of our alternates to serve on the board. And I know we went through this discussion when, I think when we adopted the bylaw six years ago, was when city council changed the ordinance to create two alternates to the ZBA, that at that time, there was some discussion, well, how do we know which alternate serves if somebody's not absent? And we said, well, we'll kind of figure it out as we go. And for the most part, it's word, but that one meeting we had in August where none of the alternates were here and we were short so many board members at that time that we had to adjourn the meeting without doing any business, whether or not we want to look at some kind of a formal procedure to say, we, every other month, you're, as the alternate, your, your job is to show up to the meeting, something along that line, just to be on the safe side, but that'd be-
Wasn't it like that when I first started?
Well, we debated-
When Mr. McCowen was the alternate.
I think we debated it, but I don't, I don't think we ever formalized the rule though, so.
He just did that on his own, then?
I think we had two that were regularly attending. But I just think Mr. Evans has done a really good job of kind of quarterbacking, letting the alternates know if there's someone needed and then, you know, rotating, but as Mr. Cal Suas, who's, who has left, he's sat in, you know, the primary alternate there, and of course, I think now the only alternate currently, but, you know, he's done a really good job in that regard too. So I just think, you know, the next senior person up would avoid a whole world of hurt. And I know this board has not, not met, for lack of quorum, I think, ever, except maybe that August meeting for many, many years, and it, sometimes with the luck of the draw, just I know, being the guardian of a 99-year-old Troy resident, that was my, my issue that particular night, I just couldn't get here before the meeting started. So I think I had just rolled into, I was getting close to being into town when the meeting started and I needed to take care of some other things, so it would have been eight o'clock before I could have even arrived that night, so. Well, I, you know, I think we took care of the business in the subsequent meeting for that. Mr. Eisenbacher, did you have something?
Yes, I noticed that the procedure, that, the rules of procedure don't have all the items that we cover in our agenda right now, like the procedure that I read is not in that list. We may want to update it to include reading of the informal procedure.
Oh, in the order of the, I see.
Yeah, number nine.
Number nine, yeah. Yeah, that would make sense.
And the question is, is do we stick the actual procedure statement in this, just for clarity? So it's a little bit more formal, as like an appendix to it.
I can see doing that, and actually it would make sense, rather than have the procedure in one file at City Hall and these in another, put them all in one. Yeah.
And then this rule of procedure should be posted on the website with the board and committee section, so that people that want to see our rules have easy access to it.
I can post these, that's not a problem. I'm presuming everyone else is okay with that. I don't see anybody shaking their head, so.
Sure.
Yeah, and it looks like the stuff at the bottom of our agenda is also meeting, missing from the communications, miscellaneous business, public comment, and adjournment.
Missing from number nine?
Whoops, no, I'm sorry, I was looking at four. I jumped to the wrong section. Oh, I'm sorry, Article Three, Number Four. No, Article Two, Number Nine. Yeah, it has it. Too many pages, too many numbers.
Oh, yeah, the hearing procedure for use variances.
Yes.
Yep, yep, yep. For all their appeals, or calling the case, staff introduction. Well, that's a, to me, it appears that's what we do, Number Four, for all the cases.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Mr. Eisenbacher, you finished?
The only other thing was that, the thing that's not formalized either in our written agenda or here is the introduction that our chairman does at the start. Would we want to formalize that?
I wouldn't. The next chairman may want to do something different and then-
It just, okay, proper chairman.
Yeah, I mean- Any other member? Okay. So we'll close that portion out and, I'm sorry.
Did you, did someone want to propose an idea for succession, or are you going to mull over that for a month, or?
Like to mull it.
Mr. Lambert?
I would prefer to mull it for a month.
You have, are you going to go back to seeing who the next senior is and then support that if that's you?
I already know who it is, so, yeah.
I think, I was going to say exactly the same thing.
Trying to keep that quiet.
Yeah. Okay, so if it's okay with the rest of my colleagues, we'll just bring that back to the November agenda and formalize that at that time. We move on to item number eight, public comment. If there's a member of the public would like to address the board at this time, please come to the podium. Seeing that there isn't anyone who would like to address the board at this point, I'll close that portion out. And any final issues, business from the member of the board? Seeing that we will be adjourned, we'll be back together in November. Thank you.